Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the town of Villavista, Colorado. It's April 23rd, 2024, and time is seven PM. I'd like for you to silence your cell phones if you have them with you. And Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Me or Fay?
Here.
Trustee Cobb. Mayor Hill, excuse me. Trustee Hilton Higa. Trustee DeCretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Call the meeting to order, and please join me in my pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight in honor of Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established this celebration in 1973 to promote historic places, instill community pride, encourage heritage tourism, and illustrate the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas the Villavista Historic Preservation Commission, established in 2016, is a group of nine town trustee-appointed members who focus on ways to protect, promote, and advocate for the town's history and the places that make Villavista special. And whereas telling the town's stories and protecting the associated places allows everyone to appreciate Villavista even more. And whereas historic preservation gives our town another important dimension and shows we honor our heritage. And whereas thousands of people participate annually in Preservation Month celebrations, the Villavista Historic Preservation Commission is proud this May is our third annual commemoration of Historic Preservation Month. And now therefore, I Libby Fay, Mayor of the town of Villavista, do proclaim May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Villavista to join their fellow citizens in Colorado and across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation. So the trustees have in front of them an agenda. And I'd like to know whether anyone has any changes or questions about the agenda. And if not, I would like a motion to pass the agenda as it's written.
And move we accept the agenda as written.
Second.
So we have Rice and DeCretzi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You also have the consent agenda, which includes minutes of our last meeting, also minutes from the Tree Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Flirt Report. Are there any items in there that need further discussion? Or is acceptable as it is?
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second.
So DeCretzi and Rowe, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So now we have a special evening here. The changing of the guard to some extent. So we have two trustees for whom they will be leaving us. Sue has come in from Switzerland via Zoom. I can't hear you.
She's in Spain.
Oh, no. Maybe she is still in Spain.
In Spain, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, it's nice to be able to turn up. And so this is a ceremonial night. And Paula, is this your?
I do have the honor of swearing in our trustees. So what we're going to do is a group. So I need to have all four of you come up here to the front. Yeah. Okay. Right over here. And I'm also going to let you guys have a little script that we're going to read. You repeat after me. By having a little script, it kind of helps us all stay in sync. And where the front is, you'll say your names. And I'll let Carly and Max get where you want. Get where you need to be, get where we need to be. All right. And you have your choice if you want to hold your right hand up or not. So. So I.
Aye.
Say your names.
Paula.
And Rowe.
Do affirm.
Let me say first. Yep. I do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The ordinances of the town of Villavista.
The ordinances of the town of Villavista.
And will faithfully perform the duties of office.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of trustee which upon, which I'm about to enter.
Of trustee upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Good. And now I need some signatures. So we have Luke over here, and I have Lenny here.
Thank you.
And there's two copies, so please sign them both. One for your records and one for mine.
You like that? Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Last time I did this was on Zoom.
I know. First to the family and friends.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. You're welcome. Now you sit. You may now take your place at the desk.
Thank you, Sue.
It's only time for giving that on Zoom. Yeah. Oh, my God, I'm in my house alone.
Congratulations, everyone. Good luck.
So where are you, Sue?
I'm in Barcelona.
Oh, you are still there.
Yes.
Very nice. Barcelona.
Barcelona.
So now we are ready for a public comment. As you came in, there was a clipboard on which you could list your name and address and topic that you wanted to address. Do we have anybody signed in, Paula?
Yes, it's right there to your left.
Okay. Here we have Justin Kirk. So Justin, come to the podium. Address and thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustee. Yes, Justin Kirk, Regional Director for Congresswoman Brittany Pedersen of the Canyon City Office and Seventh Congressional District. Offices which are also in Lakewood, of course, and Washington DC. I come with just a short update, but happy to stick around this time for the rest of the meeting as well. Two quick items. The first one, I went over briefly last time I was here, which is the deadline is quickly approaching on opportunities to get pieces for high school or high school artists to get their art to to our office if they're interested in participating in the Congressional Art Show. That competition is, will take place again as a first stage at Broad Rock's Community College. I can, I can transport that art. These are, these are not sculptures or they're much like the art you're seeing hanging around the room here. Some drawings, paintings that come. So that the date is again escaping me, but I'm happy to get the art to you, the information on, or I'm sorry, the art to the competition and then back to you when the time is right. The information on the art competition is on the Congresswoman's website, peterson.house.gov. Pedersen is spelled with all Es and two Ts. The second item I want to share is the Congresswoman's recently, along with the Chairman of the House Financial Services, Patrick McHenry, a Republican out of North Carolina, introduced the Bipartisan Ransomware and Financial Stability Act, which is legislation that would protect the critical financial infrastructure that makes daily economic activity possible by deterring hackers and setting common sense guide rails for financial institutions to respond to ransomware attacks. And then as my last item, I just want to congratulate all of you, the two who were re-elected and the two elected. Congratulations being extended, of course, from the Congresswoman, myself as well. That is all. Any questions for me? I'm like, you know, all. Okay, I'm happy to hang out, so I'll be.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate all of the attention from Congresswoman Pedersen. So now we have Ashley with us from the Chapey Housing Authority. The podium is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Trustees and staff. I'm National Capital, the Executive Director of the Chapey Housing Authority. I put some, sent some things in for tonight. Hopefully you had a chance to look over them. I'm just going to provide some highlights on my report. There it is. So this is our strategic plan for the Chapey Housing Authority. And what I do is I do this for the board every month, and I've done this for you for Q1 of this year. So the different sections are the Strategic Plan Development, Education, PR, and advocacy, programming, and funding. And I'll just highlight a couple of things in development. Excited to let you know that we have hired Janai Stokes-Birth as our new Real Estate Projects Manager in January. She started, she's amazing. She's done a great job, hit the ground running. We are highlighting mostly things related to BV. We are meeting with fading West regularly to discuss leasing up the Midland Apartments and the strategy for that. And Janai is working on that as well. And then we recently met with Paul Andrews for the Crossing Development. If you're not familiar with that development, if you're new, that's over by, it's going to be over by the Loves, behind the Loves area. And it's a multi-phase development. Paul Andrews is doing that. It has a 30-unit apartment complex that is, if the board approves it, would be acquired by CHA. And then there's some Chapey Housing Trust homeownership opportunities as well for affordable housing there. So we're working, he's going to be coming to our Development Committee meeting with his consultants. And then we'll be presenting likely at our next meeting today. Also, a quick update on Alpine West. I know I saw that the water agreement has been, work has been worked on, maybe finalized. Is that right? Okay, so that's good news. We are scheduled to potentially, if we get this final thing with DOLA worked out, the Department of Vision of Housing State. We got a land banking grant through Proposition 123 to purchase two acres in that development. It's right outside the county, right outside BV, in the county, adjacent though to the county, to BV. And we really are just waiting on DOLA to approve our petition, which would exempt us from 60% AMI rental rates. And we could go up to 120% AMI rental rates there. So we're waiting on that piece to get finalized. But the board has approved that resolution pending once DOLA has approved that. I'll stop there for any questions on development before I move on. So then in education and advocacy, we are really working on, well, one of the things, if you aren't familiar with Home in Paradise, it's a weird Chapey documentary partnership between Chapey County Public Health and CHA. And that is going to be released next Friday, the 10th. I guess it's two Fridays from now at the steam plant. We're doing a film festival there. And it's a documentary on the home, the crisis, affordable housing crisis in Chapey County. It's really, really well done. So I would highly recommend checking it out. There's also, and that's on May 10th. You can still get tickets, I think, but they're probably going to run short. There's also one on June 5th, so I'd invite you to come to that and see some of our fellow people in the community that have been in that documentary. And then also, we're putting together two housing fairs in Salida, and we'd like to do one up here in the north end of the county, really with the goal of educating people about homeownership opportunities and also rental opportunities that are coming online. So Midland Apartments, obviously, first and foremost, coming quickly later this year. And then other projects, like I just mentioned, that, you know, some of the other ones that are coming. And even, even like the Boulders, where they're going to have some studios, and maybe they're not deep restricted. But we'd like to invite the community, people that would live in some of these units, get them on the waitlist, and really educate people about some of the homeownership opportunities that are coming as well. So that's something we're working on. Would love anybody from the town to get involved in that, if you'd like. And then I'll skip over programming and highlight funding. We're working on our audit and our budget. But what I'd really like to talk to you about tonight is the ballot measure that we are proposing. As you know, access to housing is a critical issue in our community. There is a shortage of rental and homeownership opportunities in Chapey County for resident, year-round residents. And that shortage is eroding our quality of life and limits our ability to have healthy businesses, great teachers, police officers, firefighters, and public safety professionals. And without a dedicated funding source, with a dedicated funding source, more housing opportunities for local residents can be created and help them remain in our community. So our needs assessment that the Chapey Housing Authority did in 2022 shows a gap of 1,105 units of housing needed by 2027. We're looking to update that next year, do a full-blown assessment. 91% of people in the county cannot afford to buy a home. That's a lot. Alternative housing options such as rental properties are extremely limited as well. We've got some things coming online, but, you know, it's still a work in progress. The Housing Authority is neatly positioned to address and need and collaborate with local governments, developers, and partners to exhaust all potential opportunities to bring housing into our community. As a government entity that interacts with the entire county, we're on a mission to deliver housing units and stability in Chapey County through partner-driven development. To make this impact, we need the appropriate resources. And that's why this fall, we're looking to pass a half percent sales tax that would generate about 3.5 million annually that would go directly to housing. This would cost a community member about 50 cents, well, it would cost 50 cents out of every hundred dollars spent. And then a second measure, with, without raising taxes, CHA is pursuing a debruising measure that will ask the Boulders if we can keep all of our revenue from state grants and local governments that support the housing, the operations of the authority. This will help keep projects like Gene's Place continuing to go. And these measures, if passed, will give us the tools we need to help this crisis in the community. We really need your support for this. In July, we'd be coming, I'd be coming back to you to ask for the Board of Trustees' support because we can't do this without you. We're working hard to reach out to business leaders and members of the community to educate them about the proposals. And we really need an organized front to solve this crisis and work together. So I did also include in your packet the Magellan Strategies Ballot Survey Executive Summary and Top Line Survey Results. Magellan Strategies is a really top-of-the-line political consultant that does surveys like this all day long. And they did a survey for us that they say has a margin of error of only 2.72%. And they have our 95% confident in their, in their, in the survey results. So I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, but I won't read it to you. I just want you to know that the sales tax measure was favored by 50, well, people, both, people said they would vote for a sales tax at 59% of the people that took the survey. And it was weighted across, you know, different popular people, just different age groups, you know, right? And so it represents, is reflective of the 2020 presidential election. They really encouraged people to do this in a presidential election because it just draws a wider voter base, a younger voter base. So 59% of the people that took the survey said they would vote for a sales tax increase of half a percent, whereas I think it was only 44% would, let's see what it was, for the property tax, which is those are the only two ways that we can raise money as an authority. I think it's 44% said they would, they favor a property tax and vote in favor of that. So that's why we're leaning towards the, we're proposing a sales tax measure and not a property tax measure. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have. That's about it for me.
Paula, in favor of the Housing Authority? And, you know, it's exciting to see that you do have a plan for how to get a reasonable flow of revenue so that you can do some of the projects that we all have in mind for you. Just even getting the apartments occupied is going to be a big, you know, that's going to be a big project. There are a lot of apartments coming on and around the same time. So you're going to be busy.
Yes, we are.
I'll see if you have any questions for Ashley about the Housing Authority or?
I would just encourage that if you're able to, to have a housing fair up here as well. Because I think, I think that would go great. So it's both ends of the county. So if you can pull off two, I think it would be much appreciated up here, so.
Yeah, that's the plan. We do have plenty of planners helping us. So no pressure. DOLA, if your team, somebody on your team wants to help us kind of get that organized up here, that would be great. Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Okay, now we'll go on to our business items. The first of them is a public hearing in regard to Brown's Canyon Rafting application for lodging and entertainment liquor license. It's a public hearing, and I'd like to call that hearing to order. And our town staff will address this. Is this Paula?
It is.
Licensing, yes?
Yes. Okay. I'll just give a brief overview of what was in your board packet. And then Byron Brown is also here tonight to give some input. So the board is asked to consider approving an application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license for Adrenaline Rush Doing Business at Brown's Canyon Rafting, located at 28395 County Route 317. Byron Brown is our owner. As stated in the staff memo and the trustee packet, the Board of Trustees acts as a local licensing authority and by state statute must review liquor-related applications and determine whether or not the required criteria for approval of a license has been met. A lodging and entertainment liquor license is defined in the trustee packet, and Brown Canyon Rafting meets the requirements by being a entertainment facility and as well as providing food there on the site. February 13th, Adrenaline Rush Doing Business at Brown's Canyon Rafting applied for a lodging and entertainment liquor license. The appropriate fees were paid, and the application was set for public hearing before the Board of Trustees on April 23rd. The notice that the public hearing was published in the Chapey County Times on April 11th and on property on March 27th. Background checks were submitted for Byron Brown, and satisfactory results were received from the Colorado Bureau of Investigation and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Proof of possession, the premise was provided, and in Needs and Desires Petition, the neighborhood was circulated and included with the application. Pro enforcement officer Grant Ryan's Chapey County Consumer Protection Specialist, Stephanie Nelson, and Chapey County Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Kira Jones have approved the liquor license. Police Chief Dean Morgan expressed concerns about approving alcohol licenses for entities operating vehicles, boats, and rafts. Byron Brown provided the details for selling and serving alcohol, which are included in your board packet. Chief Morgan has given his approval for the issuance of the liquor license. Approval for Planner One Caroline Mahoney occurred after the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a special use permit on April 17th. The special use permit is required since the property is zoned light industrial and Brown's Canyon Rafting is a commercial business. In conclusion, the trustees are being asked to consider a motion to approve, approve with amendments, or deny the application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license for Adrenaline Rush Doing Business at Brown's Canyon Rafting.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Sure. Yes, please. To the Board of Trustees, Brown's Canyon Rafting respectfully requests a lodging and entertainment liquor license to further enhance our guest experience we provide. This license allows us to offer responsible alcohol service in a controlled setting, complementing our existing offerings and promoting responsible tourism. We're planning not selling pre-trip. This is all for post-operate trip for our guests. We, our priority remains guest safety. Service will be limited to designated areas after rafting activities have concluded and will not be offered to participants before or during their trip. Employees will not be permitted to drink before or during work. Basically, we, after our first trips go out, our staff will screen guests if they are purchasing alcohol, making sure they will not be going out on a trip. And we're here to serve both our guests who are there after the trip, having camaraderie, watching their slideshows, whatnot, or if they want to go play some yard games out back or enjoy some food from the food truck on property in Annie's Bowls. We would like to occasionally have some live entertainment in the back, going through the proper permitting and have, you know, limit to what time we finish. Our normal business hours, the retail office is open from eight to generally around 6:00 PM. Sometimes that's a little later, depending on when trips come back. If we needed to put a limit on time, we're asking until 9:00 PM unless there's a special event. And then we'll go through the proper permitting if we do have any music and whatnot down the line. Yeah, we have policies in place where employees know alcohol policies already. And we would definitely abide by those and do. And are there any specific questions?
Trustees' questions? Are you open to the public as well?
We are open to the public as well. And walking around, touting with the petition, you know, residents of the farm are excited to hear that there might be a place within walking distance to come and have a beverage.
Yeah, that could be a good addition to the neighborhood. Yeah, that could be a good addition to the neighborhood. And will your staff be taking training such that they don't serve people or they don't over serve people?
Correct. Yeah, they will be doing the tip certification and whatnot.
Are you thinking like a traditional bar setup or more like cans?
More like cans and a couple pre-batch cocktails. And we would be using the, the food trucks three base thing to prepare everything. And all the sales would happen from the building. No sales out of the food truck, everything within the building. But no modification to the building, no adding sinks or added water use.
Other questions? So is there a motion to approve? The lodging and entertainment liquor license for Adrenaline Rush Limited Doing Business as Brown's Canyon Rafting.
Move to approve the application for a lodging and entertainment liquor license for Adrenaline Rush D B A. Brown's Canyon Rafting, do you have a question, your current issue, Joel?
It is a public hearing.
Sorry.
Sorry, I was trying to, trying to get my microphone to work. I would have said the same thing. Thanks, Joel.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, it is open for public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on this, you can have three minutes to speak to it. One on Zoom.
No answer is.
Okay. Would you like to say anything else?
Thank you for your consideration. Would love to answer any questions or concerns anyone might have.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming to us. So I will close the public hearing. And is there discussion among the board members on this?
In, in our packet, it says approved by P M Z. See ordinance for conditions of approval. What were the conditions that you had to approve it?
Sure, there's one condition and that condition is for special use permit. And the condition was that they receive this very same license, liquor license. For operating.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, now would someone like to make a motion as to approving this liquor license?
I move to approve the liquor license for Brown's Canyon Rafting.
Okay. Good, so we have Rosanor and Roe. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. And the liquor license is approved. Okay, I'd like to open another public hearing. This one has to do with a rezoning of one fifty Greg Circle. And. This will involve whether the Board of Trustees will approve the adoption of ordinance number eight. Series twenty twenty four, which is entitled An Ordnance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Bena Vista. Rezoning certain property known as Lot A one Colorado Center Land Unit Development. From light industrial I one to highway commercial H C and amending the official zoning map. So Joel, this one must be in your.
It is. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. This is a public hearing and just a process reminder. Going to be doing, but it's a public hearing and so we'll open, open the hearing. We'll hear from. A little bit and then the applicant has a short presentation and then I have some additional information. There'll be an opportunity for the trustees to ask clarifying questions to staff of the applicant. Then we'll have the public comment portion, close the public comment portion. And then you all, you can close the hearing and deliberate and make a motion accordingly. So, so this is a rezone that we'll get into it, but just, you know, the applicant does have, have a presentation. It's a statutory process and so there's certain criteria that we'll look at and we'll have to evaluate for the rezoning. They, I know there's some idea on what they plan to do there. With appropriate authorizations. But as a rezone, we're taking a look at just the zoning, not a site plan or that sort of a thing. Even despite the presentation, right? But it's informative to kind of know what, what they're thinking. But once it's resolved, it's resolved, right? And so it's a use by, use by right kind of a situation. And there's also some considerations like the airport overlay district is there. And, you know, they're well aware that there are certain restrictions that would have to, you know, comply with that overlay area as well. So, and those things happen later on. This is really just that rezone. So, so with that, invite the applicant, James or Justin, you guys can come on up. Please introduce yourselves and your address and floor is yours.
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate it. Thanks for having us here. My name is James Weiner. Address is one seven four seven zero Reserve Drive.
My name is Justin Burns and again, thank you trustee members and mayor for having us. I reside in Howard at this point, would have been in Pontchar Springs for the past five years.
Sorry, it's a little bit hard for me to see, but yeah, we'll make this short and sweet. But just wanted to go over a quick agenda of what we want to review with you all. Give you a quick introduction and background, who we are, what we've done in Chaffey County so far. Second, talk through the project concept and narrative. Joel brought up a great point. Yeah, the, the reason is front of mind, but we did want to show you all, you know, what we're thinking about there, which hopefully feeds into the zone change. Talk about some of the benefits to the community. We'll also just talk through what our holdup is with the current zoning. And then we're happy to answer any questions for y'all.
So these are a couple of projects that we've done, guys. I, I own a small construction company, J M Burns Construction. Worked with John Eastland and Eastland Structures for the past three and a half or four years before I started my own small company. So that's kind of how I got familiar with these lots and the parcel in and of itself. But everything that we've done, we've kind of done is for rent projects. Most of the work that I've done has been for, for James. And I feel like we're, you know, for whatever it's worth, everything that we do, we really try to. Try to make an asset to the community by, by it being a rental. Our rental prices are fairly affordable for, for the market and for the area. And that kind of feeds into the project that we have in mind here, although we're just looking at zoning today. Just, just, just kind of a history and a background on what we do.
Yeah, and we, all of our projects, just to pull up on him, all of our projects we've done so far have been in Salida and Pontchar Springs. We are fifty percent enters and tail end apartments. We'll be taking over full ownership and management of that. We have an additional seventeen units we've done in Salida, multi-family in eighty years. We own and manage all of those locally and keep them all as long-term rentals. And we'll, we'll show you the site plan and a little bit of the building design. But what we are thinking for the property is a mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor. Depending if we go up three floors, you know, that's still a question to be answered. But at least commercial on the first floor and residential rental apartments on the second floor. The commercial space is extremely flexible, making it accommodate businesses from offices. You know, light industrial, F and B, they all have a garage man door on them. They'll, you know, car access in and out. So we're trying to make them as flexible as possible just to cater to the small businesses in the community. The zoning holdup that we ran into with the light industrial is that the residential portion essentially is not permitted there. There is live work, which can be permitted by special use. But the definition of live work in the land use code says that the same tenant has to occupy the residence and the commercial space below. Which we just, we feel isn't feasible for the project.
This is a, a basic site plan, guys, and this isn't set in stone by any means. It's just an idea and a concept. Lot that we have is unique in the sense that it's an island. There's access all the way around it. It kind of separates it from the rest of what was the Colorado Center P U D. What we're showing here is just a conceptual plan of several different buildings, which would be, like James mentioned, commercial on the first floor. For the majority of the space, the blue places that you see there would be our A D A compliant units. Because we would know that we would have to have a certain, a certain amount of those, which, you know, it should be about three units based on the, the number of total units here. So those would be the A D A compliant units with the rest of the residential space being on the second or third floor. And then I think it's in the next slide, but this concept, and that's that slide there. The buildings, if you can go back one more round, I think it was, or that one there, yeah. Those are buildings that I actually found in Eagle. I've got friends who occupy, they have a raft business and they occupy the lower portion of, I believe it's that green building there on the left side. If I'm, I'm looking at the right structure, but they have a business called Raft Colorado. Their neighbors are architects. There's some other businesses there that are like equipment rental companies. I think there's like a, there's like a tattoo shop in one of them. It's, it's kind of a high spodge of different businesses, which really creates a cool, a cool kind of scene there in Eagle. They actually live above their business, so they would fit within our live work concept, but I know that their neighbor does not have a business there. They just live there. So that's kind of, this is kind of an example of what it is that we're trying to achieve. And even the architectural style of it, I think, would probably fit well for what we want to do as well.
Yeah, and we went through, you know, and, and looked at the, the town's comprehensive plan. Just wanted to point out a few items that we thought, you know, were really, this, this development catered to. Number one, housing, which was obviously spoken about earlier. All of the housing in this development will be long-term rental apartments. You know, we don't, I don't, I don't want to call it affordable housing, but we do try and keep our, our prices attainable and build them efficiently. You know, there's also seems like a lack of commercial space for small businesses to operate out of in, in the county in general. But in, in Pontavista as well, besides Main Street and South Main. So we're hoping that, you know, we can create spaces for small businesses to go into that'll create jobs. A lot of these businesses that we see go into the Eagle development or that we ambition coming into this as well. Yeah, hopefully we generate some sales tax to, some tax base for the town.
Any additional questions? We're, we're open for it.
Yeah, let's, we'll go through the staff presentation first and then we'll kind of save for all, all questions that might have. Thank you all. So, so this property is, is located off of Greg Drive. It's between Greg Drive and Greg Circle. There's up by the airport, you know, that little, little space right in front of the Habitat for Humanity store. It's a good parcel as you drive up. There's a. Kind of a detention pond, a little parking lot and so just the east of that. We have a. Little better map here coming up, but again, this is. So hybrid commercial is, the request is to go from light industrial to hybrid commercial. Okay, they, they want to do some sort of a vertically mixed-use commercial and residential development, which is allowed in highway, hybrid commercial. As I said, it's not allowed in light industrial except for the live work component. They, if anything were to be approved, they, they would need a special use permit. Have to comply with the overlay district and go through that, that process of. Putting residential there and, you know, the specific criteria for a special use permit, which is down the line. A, the. Like again, it does not have, light industrial doesn't have that flexibility for the housing, which is ultimately what they want. And we need to evaluate it as not according to their project, but according to zoning. Whether or not a change in zoning makes sense. So here's the property. You see Steel Drive coming in. It turns into Greg Circle, Greg Drive. It's all kind of this pod, pod over there. Just north of the property is the A S I, kind of a storage. Primarily used as, as storage where they operate some things out of there, making dams and such. You also just north of where it's a steel there, that's where the new E M S, Chaffey County E M S building is going. Toward the east, you have C P W land that, you know, our runway is on C, C P W parcel land, C P W land. But that's what that is. And to the south, we have. Habitat for Humanity and Performance Tour Rafting Company, just west of Vacant Land. So a little background on this property. So like they said, this is part of the Colorado Center P U D. Planed unit development that was approved in two thousand and six by Ron Souther, who, who passed away, who. You know, he helped kind of create the airport. He was the first F B O or fixed base operator at the airport. He built the terminal and he kind of conceived of the whole property, two hundred plus acres. Of property as the Colorado Center and it was zoned. You know, they donated some land to the. C M C or Mount College and they, they had envisioned some hotels and some dormitories. And some businesses that would help support the airport, right? Like manufacturing, things like that. And including they had this area up front that was kind of this gateway zoning, which is where this property is. So it operated, Colorado Center went through phase one. And this was part of phase one entry commercial, but, you know, the Colorado Center never really took off for a variety of reasons. Including some of the zoning was a little restricted. Within that time, we had the most, most recent comprehensive plan approved in two thousand and fifteen and that plays in later, but it's important to note. And then in March of two thousand and twenty three, the P U D was terminated. So we're going to remove that zoning that was associated with P U D and it turned into. That light industrial zoning, which didn't exist as it is conceived back in two thousand and six. It's kind of this new, new zoning. And then, of course, you know. We had the inquiry this fall to develop this property. The process for rezoning, we had this pre-application meeting. We reviewed it. And, you know, came up with a report, came up with kind of this action plan. Had public notice, which was a two-week public notice. We published in the Chaffey County Times. Three weeks before the Planning Zoning Commission meeting, again, three weeks before this meeting. We sent notices to the neighbors. We had signs posted up. We had a public, public hearing for planning zoning, as you saw, April third. And here we are tonight. So if you all approve this this evening, it would be an ordinance change that would take effect three days from now. So this is a very kind of a, it's very handy having this, this process laid out with the zoning. Although there's some ambiguity and so it's up to the board to kind of see if you agree with staff or not, or whatever conclusions you might make. But there are four rezoning criteria and they have to comply with one of those. We define, yes, it's compliant with one and then there are two additional zoning criteria and they have to comply with both of them. So we'll go through these criteria. Let me just read them real quick. One, is it consistent with the cop plan and the U D C, which is chapter sixteen of our municipal code? Two, is it consistent with the intent of the proposed zone district? Three, are there significant changes to warrant a rezoning? Four, was there an error in the current? So just one of those four. Both of these, well, the intensity, the intensity will not create adverse impacts and public facilities are. So the first one is it consists of the cop plan. The chapter three of the cop plan is all about developing the economy, so adding additional potential commercial units, hybrid commercial. Fits, if it, if that special use permit is received, then it does speak to, you know, the multi-family and the commercial aspects as well. So staff found that it did. Is it consistent with the intent of the proposed zone district? Yeah, and that's, that's detailed in your, in your packet, you know, what the intent is. But there's statements on, it's supposed to strengthen the economic base, minimize impact on residential. Zone districts. And is, is the retail, the services require or have access to automobile access? Which Steel Drive is not the highway, but it is a significant connector from the south end of town all the way to the west and across. Yeah, West Main, up to West Main. So for really significant in that regard. A lot of people use it and also provides a point of. Significant changes to warrant the rezoning? Well, the PUD was eliminated. Okay? And so this is a subjective, but yeah, you can make a really good argument that there are significant changes because the PUD was there and turned to light industrial. Going back to that first comprehensive plan statement, the 2015 comp plan was created with the PUD existing. The 2008 comp plan was approved with the PUD already existing, right? So, so those comp plans saw the PUD and what it was trying to do prior to any. But without really providing input of what could this area become? Because it was already conceived as this PUD. So we wiped that zoning out, and we haven't yet had an opportunity to revisit within that comprehensive plan. But it does fit with that entry zone, you know, within the PUD zone district. So yeah, that, that can be. Were there changes? That is a pretty big change. It's subjective. Is there current zoning? I don't believe there is. So that wouldn't qualify. The intensity will not create adverse impact. The approved Colorado Center certainly contemplated significantly more impact than this would be. So there would be nothing additional to what had been considered and approved in 2006. Public facilities are available, available, yes, on Greg Drive and Greg Circle. They are in terms of water and sanitation, et cetera. So we find that the first two, yes, definitely. The second one, again, is subjective, but, you know, Steph certainly find that it is. And both of them fall in. Next. So the next steps, after clarifying questions and, and then the public comment period, if there's opportunity, you guys can deliberate and you should entertain a motion to approve the ordinance to rezone. You can amend the ordinance. Of course, continue the hearing to date certain or deny the rezoning, okay? And that motion in the packet also includes a statement in there authorizing us to amend the zoning map, which is required. So. But there are no conditions attached to it, because there's, those conditions can be attached to zoning or rezoning. Anyway, so that said, if there are any clarifying questions, both applicant and staff are here for y'all or, or just open up for public comment.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It needs to comply with the airport overlay. Is fading west in that airport overlay?
No.
No. So is three-story buildings allowed in the airport overlay?
There's a height limit of 35 feet. So potentially, if they're, if they're smaller.
Okay.
Are there other provisions of the airport overlay that you could?
Yeah, I mean, it's detailed in the code. I, I can't think of additional ones off the top of my head. I know they, they. Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to visit that.
Like, are there no restrictions on building residential properties that's, that mind about noise from the airport?
It's not, they don't, they just, they don't like it, but it's not prohibited. So, and some of that has to do with. Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of factors within that, but that, whether or not to put residents there would be something that would be, want to be looked at in the special use permit process, for sure.
And the applicants had access to that airport overlay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've been through it significantly. It, he's exactly right. And the height is a function of the distance away from the runway. It's a, it's a math equation of how high the building can be based on its proximity to the runway. So all that's going to be laid out pretty, pretty straightforward in those FAA documents. And also the airport overlay, the district extends all the way into town. It is rather large. So certainly residences are approved within it. It's just a, it's a function of how close and how high.
Has the, has the airport advisory board had any comments on this or any thoughts that they?
We have, we've not brought this before the airport advisory board.
I know Jack's on. I'd be curious if he has any thoughts if, if that's.
We've met with Jack as well and kind of told him about, talked to him about this. We had, we, we talked to him about some other projects that we had or other property that we had next to the airport. But I think that it would be, you know, I, I think, I don't think that he would have any issues, but certainly welcome to speak to him as well, but he is familiar.
That's great. Mary, if it's, you're already with it, I would love to hear from Jack. I see he's online, if that's, if it's permissible at this time to hear.
Yeah, Jack, as a member of the staff, would you have comments on this, please?
Uh, yeah. So, I mean, the building around an airport is, you know, the, the big things that FA does really is against is schools and churches and stuff like that with community. But residential and building, it's, it's not a no for sure, but if it's going to be residential, people have to understand they're living beside an airport. And so just have to deal with that. And then as the airport grows, it could become, you know, you know, more heavy traffic, more jet traffic. So long as they understand that going in. There is another form the FA will require, and I think the developers, we discussed that. It's a, we call it a seven, 7460, and it's just for the FA to know what is around vertically around the airport. Not that it, it won't get denied for sure, but because we do already have buildings right across the airport. They're probably above 35 feet now, but. So all that said, it's, you know, it's, it's fine to build around an airport. Just know going in that you're by an airport.
Again, some of this was, this sort of a project, including hotel, had, had been envisioned with the Colorado Center PUD, and so that's, you know, sort of a different kind of circumstance.
Two more questions. Yeah, that's okay. The other question is, how would a rezone potentially affect the other properties around Steel? Meaning, this one is rezoned, does that open the door for everybody else to also have the ability to rezone? Whether we want that or not, I don't know. I'm just curious if that.
Yeah, and anyone has the, the. You know, the, the right to request a rezone of their property to whatever it might be. And if it, if it falls within this criteria, then. And if they use the same basic general layout, then there would be a greater likelihood that that could be rezoned, right? And so certainly, yeah, certainly other people could do that, for sure.
Might make it easier, I guess.
Might make it easier, and it, it, you know, we do have the comprehensive plan process coming up, and so we might identify that, yeah, this area needs to be something besides industrial or, or we like the industrial.
Then my last question is actually for the applicant is, how many units total are you thinking for the rentals? I was trying to tell from your.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we, we showed it in two different ways, and we have, we have not totally figured it out. The buildings themselves are about 4,000 square feet a floor. So either be four 1,000-square-foot apartments, or we could also mix that up with, you know, studios on one half and have potentially six per floor, eight per floor. We, we haven't made that decision yet.
There's no chance of any affordable units with that extended? I know that's not part of this.
We, we weren't anticipating it now. You know, if it, if it made sense, if we could work together, that'd be great. But yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't have any conversations about it yet.
Thank you.
There's a lot of dust out there from that part of town. When? Any other questions, comments from trustees? Is there a motion to approve that? Call my comment, yes. Are you here for the public? Yes, good.
I am, actually, yeah. My name's Kevin Foley, and I own the property right across the street from it, River Mountain Recreation and Performance Stores. And we purchased the property, excuse me, in 1995 from Ron Southern, and we've been up there ever since. And we have three acres there, and it's our main headquarters. We operate on five different rivers throughout the state. And we do have vehicles that are coming and going pretty early in the morning and sometimes getting in pretty late at night. And the reason I bring it up is, you know, I'm very pro-business, and, you know, I'd definitely be in favor of commercial development up there. My concern is the residential, because, you know, we could have our vehicles being started up at 6:00 AM to go to another river or even down to our candid city outpost. And what that involves is we do operate school buses, so they have to have CDLs, Commercial Driver's License. We have to do pre-trip inspections, which involves pumping horns and air brakes. And I guess where I'm going with it is, you know, we've been up there operating for the last 28 years. And, you know, we do make noise. And when you put residential units in that area, I guess what I am concerned about is you may create a potential conflict between the businesses up there and the residents complaining about noise. And I guess largely it would have to do with airplanes as well. But, you know, that, that is a concern of ours, is that we're able to continue to operate business as usual without having complaints from new residents when we've been there for close to 30 years. And so that would be one of my concerns. And the other is, you know, I, you know, I, I'm very familiar with the PUD. Ron Southern and I, you know, we had conversations about it way back when, the Colorado Center. And then I was approached by Dan Cooper when it was being rezoned, and I talked to him extensively about the rezoning and what it entailed. And then I also talked to the town of Punta Vista, and I was on board. I said, okay, if it makes it easier for future businesses to operate up here, I'm in favor of it. But I did bring up the question of residential. And at that point in time, I was told that it probably would never happen right in that area. But, you know, I guess things change. And so I had had a concern about it for a while for that reason. I just feel that you're mixing residential use in with a, right now, it's currently all industrial, and there's the potential, I guess, for conflict. But that would be my main input right now. I guess I don't want to be prevented from operating the way I am currently operating, because I've been there for a long time, and nobody's approached me about it. But I guess it's up to me to approach you guys.
Does the staff have any comments on that?
Just thank you for the comment. I think the only, you know, going back to the process itself, not to discount concept residence, et cetera, now, but it is a, just a rezoning at this point. I know the intent is to go for that special use permit. And, but that's a different process, the secondary process, which would need to be evaluated. Certainly, that's, you know, the idea is, hey, we want to do this mixed-use idea. And, and, but what we're looking for is, is the criteria that we have right now. So that's.
Jacob? If we were to go through a special use permit process for multifamily dwelling or residential, could we request within the permit process some type of written notice to potential renters of business practices in the area, so they know in advance? I know we have like a right to farm. We don't have a right to business, you know, rule in the county, but is that something that we could request through an SUP process?
Yeah, there's a, you know, we can put conditions on that special use permit process, and, and there could be something along those lines, for sure.
Thank you.
Question on, point of clarification. Without the rezoning, they can currently construct units that are commercial with a live-in resident, but really the rezoning would enable them to basically have additional residences. Am I correct with that or not?
Yeah, they'd be able to have additional residences, but I think more importantly from the developer's point of view is a, someone who is not the business could rent residence. Yeah, but you can do live-work, you know, and typically that's one residence with that one commercial space.
And that's currently permissible under the Iowa, or no?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
So you wouldn't need a rezone for that?
Correct. You would need a special use permit for that as well. Yeah.
May I have one more comment? Um, so just to kind of tee off of that, I have a friend with Ron Southern. I drank coffee with him on a regular basis in the mornings. And this was, initially this lot was slated for exactly what we were proposing. It was actually a full apartment complex. Ron had the whole, whole model in his office, and he had made it whenever he created the PUD. It was actually his whole model for this and kind of what this lot would have been is an apartment complex. He was going to have a modular facility that was supposedly manufacturing modular components on one end of the, the PUD and building this apartment complex. There's going to be four buildings. There's going to be access from every corner. So really, where the change took place was in the zoning change just a few years ago, or maybe a year or so ago, where we went from the PUD to the industrial zone. That was whenever the, really, things went in favor of, of commercial and they're not doing residential there. Residential was always a part of the PUD since its inception, I don't know, 30 years ago, whenever Elon did this. So the change took place a year ago, not 30 years ago. And that's, just for whatever that's worth, that's, that's, this was always kind of what this parcel was designed for and kind of why it is the shape that it is. Obviously, we went back to the original.
Mark.
Quick comment. Mark Jakins, 314 South San Juan B. I know recently the board's been all concerned about traffic flows in our community and stuff. And as that area develops out, develops out there, I think we need to just keep that in mind about that intersection there and just keeping on seeing all those conversations about, as those numbers increase, that, you know, we have more safety there at that intersection, with increased flows from that development out there. So, thank you.
Plan for that traffic light? The, the design is slated for 2027. See that fiscal year 2027? That's all we know, so heavily in a few years.
That would be a light at 24 and Steel.
Right.
Without regard to whether there's a crossing.
Correct. So that is happening. Yeah, it was, we did that traffic warrant, signal warrant analysis a few years ago, and it was determined that it's needed, so. Yeah, absolutely.
And if we were to rezone, what's the slated timeframe of the project for the area?
I would say at least a year out.
Yeah.
Before we, anyway, just, just if we were to start planning today, which we won't really be able to do until we have the rezone, a year is the minimum, so I would say probably.
I would suggest if there are no more public, was that part of it?
Okay.
And then, then deliberate a little bit more and have other questions if we need it.
Okay. Is there any other comment from the public? Okay, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. And the board now may discuss this further and ask questions of staff. Andrew, you have any comments on this?
The special use process, like we was talking about, that, that's an opportunity where there can be some conditions to protect the exit, to, to protect the interests of the existing businesses in the area.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're going to live next to an airport, you're going to hear stuff. You know, I live on Park Lane where I hear air traffic all the time. So I think it's a common thing, you know, and having, I think, also.
So I think it's a common thing, you know, and having, I think, also having that additional awareness to residents in that area about the rafting company during those few months, I think, is, is a great addition as well to make sure they're aware of that. And then that's conditional with especially.
Yeah.
Does that handle just at the planning and zoning level or does that special use permit come back before us?
Be the planning and zoning commission.
I think most of my thoughts have to do with the SUP and not the rezoning in and of itself.
Okay.
But if it doesn't come to us, then will P and Z take, well, so how do we have input then if it's only this P and Z level doesn't come back to us?
Is that something we can call?
I have to see with the codes. I know for various site plans for sure, and this would require a site plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry for jumping in, but I believe with the size of it, Joel, tell me if I'm wrong with that. That just goes to P and Z, right? Don't larger conditionally use permits?
Yeah, it should just go planning zoning, but we can't call it up for site plan for sure, which would be, which would happen at the same time.
Yeah, the site plan is not the same kind of authority to impose conditions, though.
It's true.
Conditionally use permit. So, I mean, there are sort of separate considerations. And this is whether or not the zoning is appropriate for the neighborhood, you know, based on the criteria that Joel has put in his staff report. Whereas an SUP, conditionally, sorry, I meant special use permit, I'm sorry. A special use permit that gives you more of the ability to look at the specific actual development and impose conditions on that development. It's a little different than just a site plan review. So you're, you're probably not going to get a lot of opportunity to impose conditions. But, you know, your planning and zoning commission is supposed to have the same considerations that you'd be considering. It's just not going to be you. It's going to be them. And staff can certainly provide them with staff's input and staff's recommendations, you know, based on what they're hearing from you tonight and your concerns. So.
Can I ask one question? If the business owners felt like his concerns are not addressed at planning and zoning, can he then come before this board to say, I'm not happy with how my concerns are being addressed?
I, I'm taking a look at your appeal process in your municipal code right now. I should, should know that a little bit quicker. But I'm not sure if special use permits get, have an appeals process to the Board of Trustees. I'm trying to find it quickly. Just give me one second. I might be able to find. If you want to keep talking, I can, I can respond to that in a minute.
Is it possible to approve an amendment that that would be attended to?
To approve?
If we approve this rezoning with an amendment or a condition that the existing business owners' concerns would be attended to?
We could put something, we can, we can put something in the, in the ordinance, make an amendment to the ordinance that this would need to be included within the, any kind of special use permit process where we cannot condition the actual zoning.
It would be more of direction to staff to, to, to address it with the planning commission when a, when a actual special use permit comes. It wouldn't be a specific condition of your rezoning.
I feel comfortable just saying, I would like to give direction to the staff to bear that in mind when advising planning and zoning and supporting them and keep that in mind, please.
I would just like that. We really wouldn't like to disclose anything that would make you change the way that you operate.
And I would hope you wouldn't.
Yeah. We, our neighbors at Deer Hammer, they talked to us about it. They love the project. We also said, you know, hey, if there's any sort of business that would go in here that would interfere with you putting a distillery next door, like, we're fine with imposing that condition, that we won't do that. So, yeah, apologies. We did not talk to you about it.
Yeah, I mentioned before, but, yeah, my main concern is, you know, my property is literally 20 feet from yours. So noise is going to carry it.
Would you be okay with just giving direction to staff?
I think his, his concerns agenda, but it does appear to be appropriate for the area, the rezoning.
Yeah.
Right.
Is anyone ready to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 33.
Excuse me, it's ordinance number eight.
Oh, it's number eight.
Wrong one. Ordinance number eight. A second. Thanks, Paul.
Dale, Rowan, Rice. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. I do have that note written down and we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
With the site plan, we can bring that forward to the Board of Trustees as well.
Thank you for bringing your comments.
I think his future concern as a resident.
See any conflict between residents that aren't aware that, you know, we're there for three months of the summer and we're noisy and there's a lot of traffic.
We want to set expectations right too. So, yeah, in here, we don't want angry residents either.
Hopefully, we can have some input.
Thank you all.
Okay. I think we have Joel again.
Yeah.
Comprehensive plan bids that have been received and staff has gone over them and made some suggestions.
Thank you very much. This is not a public. Thank you very much. So we've, you know, we've got a grant from DOLA eight or nine months ago to start a comprehensive planning process. And we have been working, soliciting bids, as you all know, since, I guess, our bids were turned in March 18th. The, we received 10 RFPs, which is fantastic, we have a $200,000 budget to work with the planning department staff. And many members of the Planning and Zoning Commission went through the documents. We had interviews with the top four candidates. The Planning and Zoning Commission came forward with one recommendation in this order to, to engage SE Group, which is Snow Engineering, BBA SE Group, to carry out our comprehensive planning process. There was, you know, any of those top four candidates would have been excellent. We included the top two RFPs within the packet. That's why the packet was very, very long. But we didn't include all 576 pages of RFPs that we had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Yeah, you're welcome. We also did include a little synopsis sheet for those top two, some pros for community builders and SE Group. So the Planning and Zoning Commission and the staff recommend that we engage with SE Group, which is also $30,000 under budget with some potential add-ons. And we have the professional services agreement and RFPs. If there are any, any questions, happy to answer any questions for you. Imagine once we, you know, if you go ahead and approve this, we'll get going right away. If you don't approve this, we can try and negotiate with an additional firm.
I have a question. What was the biggest challenge with our last conflict? Was it community engagement? Was it getting stakeholders together? What, what was the biggest trouble from the last time we did this?
Good question. I think there was probably some, I would say directional input from, from us. You know, what to do and how to kind of help, help guide the process for, you know, not, not just whether or not they can, they engage a community, but how to like incorporate their collective vision statement or, you know, our key outcome areas or all the existing product that we already have. How do we incorporate that within the process? And so I think, I think we're missing on some of that. I think there was some, maybe some limited community involvement as well. We have additional tools now that we didn't have before. And I think some of the analysis was, was a little too causal. Instead of noting trends or themes, it was kind of these leaps in causality that that was uncomfortable.
Philip, you were, you were part of the group at that time. Do you recall anything about an answer to Maggie's question?
Yeah, I think Joel summarized it well. I think we're better at community engagement now and engaging whether that's happening at an appropriate level. So I think we're better prepared this time to monitor as it's going along and correcting as opposed to finding out at the end that the process wasn't good. So, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll just say I liked, I actually liked to see these application or better, mostly because I think they had some more clear and perspectives on how to recruit folks who don't normally engage in the process. So something I would just like us to keep in mind, it sounds like obviously it is something you're thinking about. But I, I don't know if like traditional flyers and whatnot are going to bring in the kinds of folks who don't normally engage. So maybe we can pull some good ideas from some of the other proposals in, in that regard.
I think we're pretty fortunate to have two folks who have some lessons learned from the last go around who are contractually obligated to stay involved. No, I, I think we have a resource here in the folks who were involved in previous version of seeing things. Okay, maybe let's, let's be, let's bring some of those lessons forward into this process. I just want to say that's a, that's a big value added, I think, we as a community have from you guys. So please stick around and make sure the lessons learned are applied this time.
Cindy, do you have any recollections of that process?
Not a whole lot. I took Philip's place on the board, but I was attending the meetings regularly at that time. My big concern is community involvement, wide community involvement, not just one section of the town. It's, it's trying to get everybody to interact from whether businessman, residential, whether, you know, old time, new time. That they take the whole town, that it isn't just one area that's making the decisions for the whole town.
I, I fully agree with that. I, I did see the red line where community engagement was absent from the previous. So that was a nice jump to see from SE Group as them willing to do that much more frequently. And I also, I like to see these RFP. I appreciate that they're a nonprofit and that they do this. I think that's extra challenging. And but at the end of the day, it did look like SE Group is going to be able to provide a little bit more community involvement in different ways. Is that the same that you guys got from here?
Yeah, I think, I think that is consistent. I think, I mean, we wrote the RFP stressing that community engagement to the point where a couple groups, I mean, they contacted us and kind of commending us for actually doing that, not being just evidently some communities just look for a three meetings, top plan done. And, yeah. Anyway, so, so that, that was part of it. Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a huge focus for us.
And I do think as the process goes forward, we all probably bear some responsibility to help cajole, push, pull, drag, you know, people to be involved.
Yeah, good job on getting so many people to apply for it and the 576 pages.
Yeah, it was very, I was pretty interested in reading these. There's a covered bridge in Vermont on there that I jumped off of. I was like, oh, I know that bridge.
So would someone like to make a motion in regard to resolution number 33?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 33, series 2024.
So we have the Kretzky and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay, do a roll call. It's not in there.
Trustee hike. Aye.
Trustee the Kretzky.
Yes.
Trustee Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Resonar.
Aye.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
And trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good job, X. Thanks, Phil.
I'd be really excited to get that going.
Yeah, now we have something to do. It's good. I was slacking.
Just a conflict, I'm not gonna deal.
Yeah.
Small lit. Can see you in five years.
So part of everybody's privilege or responsibility as a trustee is that you can become a liaison to one of the advisory boards. And I know that some of our current and carryover trustees would like to switch from whatever it is that they, they've been associated with, they'd like to do something different now. So the ones that are totally vacant in terms of trustees are the beautification board because Peter Hilton Hinga was on that and the airport advisory board where Sue Cobb has been the liaison, very active liaison. And I know that the League of Women Voters Forum, both Rice and Row were saying that they wanted to be on the airport because they dreamed of being pilots. So here's your chance.
How dare you?
But, so this doesn't necessarily have to be decided tonight. But, but you have a list, page 195 of the packet has a list of all the different places where you could participate.
Yeah, I would, you know, unless someone really hates it, I would love to continue to be on the rec advisory board. Mainly, it's, it fits with my schedule very well. I can't really do evenings. So that's, that's helpful for me.
And I have a similar sentiment about the water board because it is an evening that fits with my day job responsibilities. And that I have some degree of familiarity of what's going on there.
Yeah, yeah, you're definitely.
Just a draw.
I, I actually wouldn't mind maybe switching from trails advisory board. I know quite a bit about that space and I actually wouldn't mind if nobody else wants it desperately to move to the airport advisory board. I'd be curious to learn a little bit more. It's bad unless you guys are just chomping.
I, I would love the beautification board because it also is something I love and it fits in my schedule perfectly. So I would pick that.
And you'll be a trail also, okay?
So there's no way I'm going to be able to go to the water. I might still try.
I know, you know, Sean still wants me on the tree. But I am getting better. So, so it depends on whether the tree board still wants me.
Yeah.
So you'll stay on the tree board, Cindy? Sean wants you on there.
I'll be there.
Okay. Housing Authority has Nicole McCoy, but you said she resigned.
That was just recent, yeah. So as of late last week, Nicole is no longer on the CHA Housing Authority. Slade is married and Shore does sit on that board. I do think the overlap or the kind of pulse from elected position on the CHA, especially kind of at this timeframe with the amount of things they have going on, including ballot initiatives, stuff like that. I do think it's a nice fit if an elected can participate in that.
I might do that one. Do we know when they actually meet? It says monthly, but.
Third Thursday.
Okay.
4:30 to 6:00 or so. Four thirty to six or so.
Okay. Then they have to go drink beer or something.
It's usually via ZAM, so you can, you don't have to be inside if you don't want to.
So will you on that one?
The transportation advisory board, it's also.
That's really a good one.
Yeah, typically that's a staff member. We can talk internally. I was on that board for seven, eight years. Great board. They don't have any funding. So it's hard to get a lot accomplished with minimal funding. But I do think it's important to stay in tune with it. They always try to pick up and drop, pick up and drop, you know, kind of a master trails plan. Holistically, as far as the Chief of County Transportation Advisory Board goes, trying that connectivity north and south as much as possible. So it might be something we look at staff, staff wise, it might be the ability to take on that one.
What about the CML Legislative Council?
I've inquired with the historical historians over here. Staff does monitor. Of course, we're getting emails pretty, pretty steadily to keep an eye on it. I guess historically there was an elected that would take kind of lead on keeping a little bit more pulse on it. And so we highlighted it again to call it out if there was interest on the, the board to take the lead on keeping an eye on CML initiatives and legislative. They are pretty involved at the state level for advocacy one way or another. With the recent bills, I'm sure everybody's fully aware of kind of land use driven bills at the state level. Maybe it's more important now than in recent past where it looks at kind of local land use issues being driven at the state level.
Sorry, spit-syll. Good approach.
They're, they're quarterly meetings and, you know, I was on that committee for about eight years or more. And you'd go, I'd go maybe twice a year or so. And usually there's a vote on CML comes up with a policy recommendation advocating for the municipalities in the state and you kind of vote A or N or have some input. And then there's a legislative session in February, go and there's a presentation by the mayor of Denver or whatever, and some legislators come and you can find out some things. It's pretty, pretty informative, but you get, you can vote, but you can also pay attention to some of this stuff, like through their newsletters and.
Devin, you've been going to the Upper Arkansas area.
Upper Arkansas area council.
Yeah, I've been doing that for two years, something like that. Yeah, I'm fine with continuing to do the, unless someone really wants it. But, um, yeah, it's, it's only every, every few months. I have a meeting tomorrow if anyone wants to say anything to the, to the council. Board of Directors. Yeah, we do a lot. We did a lot with those, uh, Vinnie Grants, which was a super helpful. Well, I didn't do anything, but but, and we also are in charge of the Fremont Head Start. Oh, Fremont County Head Start, which is odd. It's, it's cool to meet other, other leaders in the area too.
So Brian, you got those changes?
I got all the changes. Yeah. And CMO is just staying, hanging out there for now.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Good. We got that done. Okay. So the next item is to select Mayor Protown. And I had asked that anybody who was interested, send me a letter of their qualifications. And I didn't get any except for a nice letter from Devin saying that he would very much like to be the Mayor of Protown. And so is there anybody else who really wants that position? Gina's been doing it for two years, so she can keep it up. She's got other things.
Hopefully other things start the next year, so.
But it's it's a good position. I did it for two or three, four years, something, I don't know, a long time. But you just kind of fill in for the mayor. If the mayor has to be away for some reason, then you sign, you know, sign checks. So it's good that you have a lot of experience with the, you know, types of projects we have going on and so.
You planning on having any new vacations soon or anything?
I mean, the other thing though was also the, the reviews and I'm happy to talk with or tell you what I did in the past and you can take it and do whatever you want, but I'll at least provide you that information. So.
Yeah, because we got a really good start on that, you know.
That's been huge. It's, it's been huge to see what you've done with that because it was pretty minimal before. So. Makes it easy for me or whoever wants to do it.
Yeah. Well, if, if no one else is, is wanting to put their name forth, I would like a motion to approve the appointment of Devon Rowe as Mayor of Protown for the town of Bu- Buena Vista.
I move reappoint Devon Rowe as to Mayor of Protown.
I will second.
Bryce and Lucrezzi. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
Does it get a card? Good thing to bring up, since we're to have so many important, prior to this meeting, we figured we'd come back around with the resolution for bank signers. That'll be on consent agenda with Devon added, Gina off.
Okay, the story about.
But we still need you between now and then.
All right.
On it. Just in case.
In case.
It's like a two weeks off. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, now we get to the really tricky stuff. This could but we have to reappoint our staff. And there are five members of the staff that the Board of Trustees directly appoint. And those are the Town Administrator, the Treasurer, the Town Clerk, and the Attorney and the Municipal Court Judge. So item number F is should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of resolution number thirty-four, series twenty twenty-four, entitled the resolution of the Board of Trustees, the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, reappointing Brian Berger as Town Administrator.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution thirty-four, series twenty twenty-four. Second.
So we have Lucrezzi and Rosenor. Should we do a roll call on that?
I don't think we need.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Here's the motion passes. Great, we can keep Brian. Okay. So now item G is should the Board of Trustees approve the resolution, I mean, the adoption of resolution number thirty-five, series twenty twenty-four, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, reappointing Hoffman, Parker, Wilson, and Carberry PC as Town Attorney.
Make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-five, series twenty twenty-four. Second.
Lucrezzi and Swisher, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, we picked up that the motion passes. Item H, should the Board of Trustees approve the resolution, the adoption of resolution number thirty-six, series twenty twenty-four, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, reappointing Paula Barnett, Town Clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number thirty-six, series twenty twenty-four. Second.
Is this second? Okay, all right, our two newbies here. So hike, hike and Russ Nor. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Go to item I, should the Board of Trustees approve the resolution, the adoption of resolution number thirty-seven, series twenty twenty-four, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, reappointing Philip Pocket as Town Treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number thirty-seven.
Roe and Lucrezzi. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, item J, should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of resolution number thirty-eight, series twenty twenty-four, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, reappointing Judge Brian Green as Municipal Court Judge.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of resolution number thirty-eight, series twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so we have Lucrezzi and Hike. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Good, good. Ready for a staff report.
I just say I really appreciate the team we have right now. I think they do an excellent job. Very happy to go through that and as quick as we do because we know how valuable you are and the hard work that you put in. So thank you all for everything you do.
Thank you.
I'm gonna second that. I wish we could have modified the resolution thirty-six to approve with appreciation. All that has recently done
Thank you.
For this election. So, yeah, thank you.
It's a great team.
All right. Wasn't sure if I was gonna have to present, but we made it.
Put it in there just in case.
Yeah, Packer has started on page two or three. A couple of just current project highlights, the radio ground, bucket sheets, lighting's installed, thinks that's how it works. Didn't that wrong? And then the bucket sheet repairs basically initiated with critical path towards getting it done before the rodeos. Multiple rodeos this year. Billy Cordova, he will touch on it in his report. But did want to highlight in here, that's a big milestone on a big project. So a big shout out to Rec for getting this far. Still a long ways to go, but it's a big, big step ahead. We had hydraulic modeling, kind of kickoff meeting with Providence Consultants this morning. That project will move pretty quickly. It'll be only a month or two to get that thing off the ground. If anybody's curious, John, head crew and contractors do have a little creek diverted and dried up in a, in a certain section. Pretty impressive channel there. Even bigger project under, underway. As far as other updates, we do have a special projects communications manager on board. His initial task can be really revamping my BV, getting it off the ground. It'll be really timely with comp plan and other planning processes out there as far as the water conservation plan, stuff like that, to start driving people towards that platform. And then mini grant application through UAA cog for the signage. Next intergovernmental meeting is next Tuesday, April thirtieth. Slade is the host city. I did get a hold of a couple of representatives from Soul Vista for the co-response update. So they will be in attendance there. Send out a, agenda, would you get it? Other meetings, Jack will highlight as far as in his report, the round table, I think that was instrumental in identifying what a process would look like if somebody was interested in building a hangar at our airport. What's the process? What are the the gaps in our process? And so we're looking at probably doing a dry run to see what that really looks like. Historical Preservation Commission, good discussion there. Initial discussions with HUD as far as the Pedersen CDS grant. Really, the representative is responsible, I think a team of twelve for five thousand grants. So the extent of what they know about our project is the title. And so ID Carbon Street Housing, childcare phase one. And so childcare is included in that process. And so identifying where we are to be able to utilize those funds. Of course, a timing component associated with that, it will require an environmental. So the next step is kind of identifying what is the scope of the environmental as far as perimeter, if it's child, if we isolate the childcare, can we just do the environmental on that one little section? So good, good conversation with them. And we'll continue down that path, seeing exactly how we utilize that on what section of the overall project. Local meetings with developers, of course, top sizing crossing underway. And DOLA training is scheduled for May fourteenth, along with a tax increment financing work session prior. TIP one oh one, so that'll be. If nothing else, good training, good information for all of us. One thing I did want to highlight to look at in schedule. There's two different ones. One is a concept ran by staff as well as, it was an outcome of the Board of Trustees Planning Session, kind of highlighting the desire to have opportunity for a little bit of a one-on-one with department heads. We do have these staff reports, but typically it's, this is ahead of schedule, typically about nine thirty, ten o'clock and it's tired and doesn't really lend itself to back and forth, in my opinion. So this is a concept of laying it out, having that opportunity for each department head to kind of dive a little deeper into their reports. So unless anybody's got a big objection to that structure, we'll try it out over a two-month process and then kind of reevaluate from there. So.
So that's the, the difference between the two is the
Work sessions.
Work session. So all, so all.
Reports moved to work sessions and just doing basically thirty-minute blocks for I know the airport annually likes to try to do, you know, more of a comprehensive presentation. You know, each department dive into a specific project that likes to dive into a little bit more than just the staff report. So.
Can we put a timer on the light stands so the meeting gets short on the back end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take staff reports out. So like for tonight, for instance, we would be walking out at eight thirty.
We would have had to get here at six, right?
True. You move it forward. Yeah.
But as long as it doesn't have to take it on the front.
We're sliding it.
Yeah.
I'm just so much tired of. I, I, I support. Yeah.
Need to put a timer on the light switch so that it, yeah.
So we'll try it out. Let's see. Yeah, we're good with that? That's everything I have.
Brian, let me ask you a quick fact of that. So that would replace any other topics that we might do in a work session?
For that two-month process, and it doesn't necessarily, you know, work session, they're handy, but it doesn't say like a topic that might have been in a work session can also be integrated into the regular schedule as well.
The reason I'm asking is I know that Al, we talked about them doing a, a work session on the water conservation plan at some point, at least getting some back before it's finished and just do an update here. Could that be something that be rolled into the, into the regular meeting then?
Yeah, that could be a business item.
Okay.
Just kind of like how we're gonna actually present up to get a nice meeting.
Okay.
Similar.
Okay, Philip.
Brian, would you mind zooming like thirty percent in on this?
In?
Wait, no, no, other way. Not on the schedule, but just for the next presentation notes.
Yep.
Thank you. I just can't read. I just can't read. It'd be a little bigger.
Ready for me, all right, good evening and welcome to the new trustees. Uh, so, don't worry, I'm not gonna go over forty plus pages of finance information. But I will explain what I typically bring forward so you kind of understand what is before you, so, this meeting just happens to be the combination of the monthly treasurer report and the quarterly report that I do as well, so. Um, typically in your monthly reports, it won't be quite this long or quite this much information, but, on page two oh seven is the start of the treasurer report. And what I typically include with that is anything that's going on, finance-related, um, for instance, uh, right now, we are, uh, trying to conclude our audit, annual audit process, which late May will be presented to the Board of Trustees, uh, for final conclusion and recommendation through that process. On page two eight, two oh eight, I've been providing kind of a, a view of our grants that we have on the books. Uh, we started ramping up our grant activity a year, two years ago, and, um, there, there's quite a bit to that, so wanted to, uh, continue to show from meeting to meeting, uh, what that looks like, I've, I've now broken into different status. Uh, so you can see we've, on the left-hand side is kind of the active ones that have, uh, been applied for, have been awarded, for our under contract. Um, on the right-hand side, the first little table is everything, and then below that are things that have recently been completed, so, uh, allows you to, to kind of see what we have on the books and, and you can ask questions about that at any time. Uh, the next page there is a summary of expenditures, various expenditures that we have from meeting to meeting. Uh, both payroll and checks and ACH payments. And then following that, I do capture all check payments that are over two thousand dollars and, and that given time period. So again, these, you can ask questions about any of these things you see. And one of the more, um, interesting pieces of this starts on page two eleven, which is our monthly sales tax report. So the first slide is a look at just sales taxes and all, and our total sales taxes, so the first table, is a summary of the month, and the table below that is a year-to-date through the current month. We're always two months behind on our sales taxes, so right now we're reporting for February. And as you can see, we, uh, February, uh, sales taxes came in down five point two percent compared to February twenty twenty three, and down six point three percent, uh, compared to budget, and you can see how that translates into dollars, by general fund, and then we do have our half a percent that goes to the street fund. Uh, so year-to-date below that, uh, combining January and February, we are down, uh, a little bit, one point one percent compared to last year, and then two point seven percent, compared to budget, so a little sluggish to start off the year for sure. So we'll have to continue to kind of take a look at that and keep it in mind as we're considering any additional expenditures beyond budget. Uh, certainly something we'll want to discuss when those types of things come up, so we know where we can fit that if we can. Yeah, and hopefully we'll see March pick up a little bit.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? So when, when you're comparing, you know, month to month and year-to-date, when you do your, or when we get into budgeting, and you're projecting what we get coming months, you're not taking the year divided by twelve, like your, your projections have our, have our big sign.
No, no, exactly, so, so you're right, it's not an even split by month. Uh, a lot of times it's me looking at trends for those months of February will have a very unique budget compared to January.
So if we're eight percent low in February and we're two percent over in August, we're probably gonna be fine.
Yes, okay, that's correct.
Do you have just like a gut thought on why we're below projections for February this year?
Uh, not for specific to February, no, I didn't see anything standing, jumping out as, you know, one business didn't report or something like that. Uh, it looked just kind of down across the board, yeah.
Is that true county-wide, do you think?
Yes, you'll see our county, uh, our county contribution didn't quite come down as low or low compared to, last year, uh, but in checking with the county, it seems pretty consistent, February was low for everybody. Slide up, county, BP. Uh, the next, um, the next slide, page two twelve, uh, we also can just take a look at specifically at our town sales taxes and distinguish between, uh, local, which would be businesses that have a physical address operating in the town, uh, versus remote, which would be most typically Amazons and things like that, but even, um, businesses that operate on the front range that are selling and collecting sales taxes for activities that are coming back to the town, so, that looks at local versus remote. So that's what that slide shows. Below that is our typical sales tax graph, where you can see a, uh, a trend over the years broken out by month and, kind of seeing that flattening trend, which we've been talking about the last few months. And then finally on page two fourteen is a, is a look at, uh, gross sales, so not, not sales taxes, but gross sales for the, for the businesses in the town, uh, broken up by industry or what is called an AICS codes, industry sectors. So kind of just seeing how things are looking at by industry, um, as well. Any questions on sales taxes, we do publish this now on the finance page on our website, uh, so people can see it there as well.
Utilities is way, way different.
Yeah, Ja- uh, January was way down.
That's utility sales, right, it's like maybe we had a warmer winter. Like it, it would include heating.
Well, those are good reports.
Yeah, hopefully we'll see the numbers more on the positive side. Um, I always include the next several pages as a budget report, a year-to-date report. Um, I don't typically go through that unless something is, uh, jumping out. Uh, as, you know, sticking out, um, in a way that we need to talk about. Um, but you're certainly welcome to ask questions, that's broken down by department and fund. Then on page two thirty-three is the start of the quarterly report, which this, uh, allows us to dig a little bit deeper, looking at our balance sheet, our fund balances and our projected fund balances and our investments, we have bonds, um, and other securities that we invest in, a little bit longer term than just our operating account. So everything's looking, uh, in good shape there, especially our fund balances. Which I do want to point out on page two thirty-six and two thirty-seven are the fund balances, uh, for all of our different funds. And the first one on page two thirty-six is, is just to look at first quarter, where do we stand? In terms of so far this year, we've, we've spent this, this much, and we received this much in revenue. How do we look, uh, in terms of our fund balances, so it's not a, it's not a projection, it's, it's a point in time how things stand. It's good to know, it's good to know we've got cash in, at the bank, you know, in the different funds, if you will. But two thirty-seven is the full-year projection. It's good to always keep an eye on, um, it's, it's hard to see, there's a lot of numbers there, but in the, the far right, uh, far-right side of the page, there's, uh, what's called unrestricted fund balance. And this is, this is important because it, uh, it would, it's what we would consider dipping into, for large one-time capital type expenditures or large, or, or projects that might come up that aren't in the budget. Um, if there is a, an opportunity, let's say, to, to do a planning effort or to spend more on a project, this is where we would look to see, do we have fund balance available that's not set aside already for something else? So you'll see, um, on the general fund, uh, between the general fund and what we're projecting to end with on the capital improvement fund, uh, we're sitting at a pretty healthy fund balance, uh, at this time. Not saying let's go spend it, but, um, it, it does grow from year to year, because we typically underspend on our expenditures and, we've seen, um, excess sales taxes over the last few years, so that's, that's well up over, uh, two million dollars at this point, so that's, that's a good position to be in.
But we, we've also spent it down some.
At times over the years, we have intentionally spent it down.
Yeah, so now we're building it back up again.
That's right, and that would be true as an example with our water fund, you'll see it's, it's projected to be at about two point three million dollars. That's been spent down in the last two years with all of Sean's team's activities, uh, expanding our water treatment plant and, hosting parties or something. I, I don't know. Uh, a lot going on in the water, uh, on the water side of things, so, um, but we plan multiple years in advance for that, so we're still sitting, in a good position with the water fund. Um, the next page is a look at our activity and our bonds, uh, we hold about three point six million dollars in bonds. And then we have colo trust, which is a higher interest earning, uh, but more liquid than our, our bonds that were, uh, sitting at about, uh, two point nine million there, um, and we earn right now about five, almost five and a half percent, monthly yield, so we do gain a bit of interest on that compared to our bank, I can count, so. I'll stop there, because I know it's nine o'clock and I could go on and on about some of this stuff. Are there any questions?
I have a question, um, the marijuana special revenue fund, is that coming in a lot less than what we had projected?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say it's less, um, uh, I, I would say that, that industry maybe is, is, but when we had one store, and then when we added the second store, there's definitely a difference there, so, I think we projected instead of two times what the one store is doing, we're, we projected one and a half times, because it, kind of diluted the, the market a bit locally, I think they're probably running a little less than that, but not by much.
The projections for the marijuana special revenue fund, looks like there's a, there's a inter-fund transfer, does, which, does that go to the general fund or a different account?
Good, great question, so in our budget, we have, uh, monies going from the marijuana fund into our capital improvement fund, to fund some of our capital projects this year, mostly, uh, recreation, outdoor, trail projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, that fund will always be for capital improvements.
Thank you.
Oh, I do want to wrap up and say that, uh, I'm happy to meet one-on-one, especially with the new, new folks, uh, to do a little finance one-on-one and then answer any questions, it, I think it's proven helpful to people, so. Feel free to reach out.
Do we have Mr. Bassford now? Our recreation report?
Sorry, sorry, I've, I've been here the whole time, just wasn't a, a panelist, but, uh, good evening, Mayor and, uh, Board of Trustees. Welcome to the, the new trustees and returning trustees as well. Few, uh, I'll kind of do a bigger dive into a couple of topics and then just a lot of things to hit really quickly. Like Brian said, in his, uh, staff report, um, we did receive our a hundred percent design documents for, um, Billy Cordova Memorial Park, um, we're starting to put together our RFP, um, but we are still waiting on our final design documents, um, which will basically have, um, the engineering stamps on them for construction, um, and then, um, based also the documents from our, um, pavilion and restroom structure that we had to purchase separately, so. Um, all of those things, um, should be coming in here in the next, um, week or two. And then we will plan on, um, releasing our RFP on Monday, May sixth. So, um, yeah, making good progress. Kind of currently have a groundbreaking penciled in for, um, Saturday, June fifteenth, um, for the park, which is also the day of the Billy Cordova Memorial, um, five K and fun run. That is put on by One Love Endurance, so kind of gonna do a little combo event that day is the current plan. Um, on the park project, we also met with Planning and Public Works, um, for site plan and talked through, um, building permit applications. Um, we turned in a pre-application, um, Jix actually today turned in our site plan application. And then we have about like eight applications that we'll need to do for the building permit, so, um, yeah, none, none of the other staff members let us know about that throughout the process, but, uh, we're, we're ready to do all the applications now. Recently, um, we have begun work on the Walton Loop, um, improvements to upgrade that to an ADA accessible trail. Um, basically kind of stage two of the process, um, currently it was just kind of a down and back trail. Um, but now it'll end up being more of a, kind of a horseshoe trail. But, uh, Trailside, um, began, uh, working that week, or sorry, last week, and, um, has been making good progress, um, you know, um, yeah, uh, Chris and Michael from Public Works, um, have, and have contributed a lot to, um, helping that project, um, you know, with water and helping with plate compacting and things like that, um, so we really appreciate that. Um, but we, um, you know, are pretty well under budget for that project, um, our contract with Trailside was, um, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, we budgeted for Walton Loop and, uh, Tater Tot Single Track Trail, we, uh, budgeted forty-eight thousand, so. Uh, we also did just get the, um, agreement signed for the work on that Tater, Tater Tot's Beginner Single Track Trail, um, which will begin, uh, um, which work began, um, for that today, um, the Tater Tot Single Track Trail will, kind of follow a similar path to the Walton Loop, um, also in a horseshoe shape. Um, we ran that path by, uh, Trails Board, uh, Beano Vista Single Track, Parks Department, the Disc Golf Crew, uh, Crew, um, to kind of make, get everybody's thumbs up on the plan for that project. That ended up being eighty-three hundred, um, so between, um, the, um, Walton Loop contract and the Tater Tot's contract, we were pretty well under budget. For that project and hoping to utilize those funds to knock out a couple of other things, um, that we've been hoping to do or to use them, um, for other projects that may be short. Um, both those projects, like I said, will be horseshoes shaped for now, um, and then we're working on the plan to make them both full-loop trails. Um, but also, um, happening today, it was a very busy day, uh, the Southwest Conservation Corps, um, crews arrived. Um, they will be camping in the day use area, um, for the next little bit, they got a special event permit for that. Basically, uh, the next four days will be, um, kind of a training crew where they kind of train their lead, train their trainers. Um, and then there'll be a, a, a adult crew for four days and then a youth crew for, I think, another four days as well. Um, but they'll help with the Tater Tots and the Walton Loop projects, um, along with another, uh, number of other trail improvements in town. And most of that work, um, is paid for by a GOCO grant that we received last year. Um, but that grant goes directly through to Southwest Conservation Corps, um, we'll just, um, Um, but that grant goes directly through to Southwest Conservation Corps, um, we'll just, um. We're basically just paying the difference between their twenty-twenty-three work rate and their twenty-twenty-four work rate, which is like eight hundred dollars, so. Um, a lot of help for not a lot of money. Um, and then, yeah, just a number of um things um we have going on, um. Andrew, we aren't planning on lights for the community center um in the opinion room, uh, but we were. Um, actually gonna put those timers and time restrictions on the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. Um, we got that agreement signed as well, um, and that should work should be beginning soon. Um, basically, we'll be able to, um, users will be able to turn a switch and set the lights to go on for like an hour, you know, kind of like a. Hot tub at a hotel or something like that, um, and then, but we're able to set those time restrictions, so I think we're gonna set those to like. You know, right now we've gone from like six to nine, um, in the summer, I think it'll be like seven to ten, so the lights will only be able to turn on during those. Um, hours to save us on electricity, um, right now, the um, the tennis court's lights are on a switch. Um, so if you don't turn that off, the lights stay on, and then the pickleball lights are just set to turn on from six to nine every day. And um regardless of any anybody's using the court, so um some good upgrades there. Um, we also turned in our um Haba Grant, which is the Help America Vote Act Grant. Um, with Lori Mitchell from Chaffey County, um, which will help with ADA building upgrades in the community center. Um, we actually didn't um increase the scope of that project a little bit because we found out we, there is this possible funding source. Um, so we also are hoping to install ADA door openers on the uh restrooms on the Aspen Room side of the building. Along with um all of the entry doors, um, or the main entry doors on both the east and west sides. Um, so that um kind of raised that project cost up to about four forty thousand above the thirty thousand we put in the budget. Um, our sponsorship program is open, um, lots of businesses coming in, and we'll use those funds to um give scholarships to. Um, the people who can't afford to participate in our recreation programs, uh, boat boat launch permits are released as well. Um, Bike to School Day was last uh week, had a huge turnout for that. Um, you know, it's been a rough season on um for of weather for youth soccer. I feel like this is like the worst spring of. Uh, what we had, we keep canceling games, but we have some makeup scheduled, um, but we're still rolling along. Um, and then most importantly, um, this Sunday is keeping Buñi Buena, our neighborhood cleanup day. Um, there is still time to register, you just may might not get a T-shirt, um, the registration is on our. Um, website, buñivistdirect.com, um, and would love to see everyone partic- participate. Um, I'll take any questions anybody may have.
Questions for Shane? Thanks for hanging in there with us all evening.
Yeah, of course.
I guess no one has any questions tonight, Shane?
All right, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have uh Jack, is he still there? Zach, you're up.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Trustees Staff. My report is on two forty-seven. Um, a little bit going on, we've got uh for a couple of our certifications done, the AWAS, we've signed a contract for that. For services for twenty-twenty-four, our elevator was inspected and passed, so that carries on, um. Uh, the layout plan for the new airport layout plan was approved so that now we can forge ahead with. The twenty twenty-four projects of uh the apron rehab as well, this will play into our hangar development. Uh, twenty-three, as you know, the fences were moved, hangar, uh, the layout plan now identifies. Hangar potential, hangar builds in these new areas where the fence was moved, so we can move ahead with that. And as uh Brian allude said earlier, we did have the uh tabletop exercise. Uh, thank you, Brian, for coming out. We had Sean from Public Works, um, and Caroline from Planning and. A couple of members from our Air Advisory Board, so it was a really good work session. We even had Zach up from uh the Salida Airport. Um, so we just addressed a lot of concerns and stuff that goes into developing a hangar. And we do have a couple of action things that we're gonna do, so it looks like we'll be. Updating the municipal code for for one, uh, for building development. And I think that's uh code eighteen dash two ninety-one and ninety-two, ninety-three carries on, but I think the last time that was done is two thousand nine. So that is one of our actionable items to update that. Um, we're also gonna look at getting a. Um, Airport Design Review Committee, so that'd be mostly like ourselves, maybe a member from Dibble and um. Air Advisory Board, just to look at when we start going down that road for hangar development. And a few other things that come up, but we do, uh, we at the airport have a a bit of on our plate to get that sorted out and we'll reconvene. But it was a very good exercise, so we found out what we didn't know, and uh a little bit of work ahead of us. Uh, we did get fuel just the on Sunday, so a hundred low lead fuel came in, so we're topped up, ready for start of the spring and summer season. Um, we finally moved ahead on the uh signage of uh the road out here at three nineteen, so we're gonna have a sign put up. Called Aviation Drive. I think last year or the year before, we board trustees approved that, and so we'll have that. And then down where our south hangar is, we'll have a sign put up there for Air Park Circle. And a big billboard out by the uh intersection as well for our sign, so a couple of things moving on, we. And uh, what else? Maintenance wise, we had a little bit of a mishap, one of our sewer lines backed up, and you can see pictures at the bottom of the page there. But thanks to Sean, uh, his department, he um got quickly got ahold of uh. Some of the folks for to help us clean out our sewer, so nothing, we had no major mishaps, no pipes broke or. Our lift station wasn't damaged, so we got it all fixed up and we're cleaned out, so that that worked out pretty good. Uh, operations wise, uh, we're a little bit, well, operations are not too bad, but our fuel sales are down, so I don't. Kind of like, uh, the taxes in town, I think it's, I'm not too sure, bit of combination of weather and maybe economics, but. Uh, we're down a little bit, but our operations are not too far off. Um, that's the report. If you have any questions, certainly entertain any questions. Thank you.
So Jack, is the hangar project that you were doing the tabletop? Um, concept, is that like one big hangar that people store their airplanes in now, or are they small hangars?
No, this will be development of a series of hangars, um, so part of it, like what you, some of the hangars out here. Um, now, doesn't, in the south part, we're we're, we certainly will entertain a large hangar, something like the one we have right here at our. At the terminal, but the other ones will be more for smaller aircraft, uh, that develop. We, uh, on the plan, it has about sixteen potential hangar locations. But we're gonna refine that because again, after that discussion, we realized. We want a little bit bigger, uh, the aircraft people that are starting to purchase now are a little larger than the smaller ones, so. But it won't be a just one or two large hangars, it'll be a series of smaller hangars.
Thank you. Questions for Jack? Airport. Okay, well, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
So, um, trustee staff interaction. Um. Paula, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
John, I heard you might have something.
Um, yeah, um, yeah, this weekend, uh, so, yeah, uh, along with uh keeping. Winnie, why don't Winnie? No, we have, we have less BB and some fantastic community, um, members volunteer their time and help our. Our Parks Department clean up our parks and do some projects, so that's also one.
Oh.
Great group of people, been at it for a little while now.
What about shutting down Cottonwood Creek?
No, that jinxed it, okay, let's not talk about it. So, so, yeah, we're, we we are in the process of 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 the uh the creek crossing right now. Um, we started excavation today, the diversion uh was installed this Friday, so we. We had a little test run for the weekend to make sure everything else, kind of watching the warm weather. About snow up top, so we're seeing the creek levels kind of come up a little bit, um, yeah, I think, I think we'll be done. Um, tomorrow evening or Thursday evening, sorry, today's Tuesday, so a couple of days to get across there and and then a probably another week of. Of of getting everything kind of put back, the diversion's quite. Yeah, yeah, this is the the pipe crossing for the expansion, we're, we're also putting in an extra pipe in the sleeve for. The future needs that we might have, we we affectionately call it the hot dog in the bun. Uh, we have that conduit, uh, but yeah, it's part of the gallery expansion project, so we put in some. New infrastructure out in our water plant facilities and, yeah, we, yeah, we're kind of, yes. Seems to be going pretty well, um, CHL, fantastic people, fantastic contractors, very professional, um, there. Lucky to have them doing the work for us, so.
Great. Mika, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
This is one where you can uh address things that somebody might have brought up during public comment or. Um, you know, something you have going on that you'd like to, um, you know, think the board should find out about, that kind of thing.
Oh, like a pregnancy? I'm pregnant, I'm due September twenty-first, so I I mentioned to the mayor just at some point, we should probably have a board conversation about. Maternity leave policies, I don't know, I don't imagine the trustees has a policy, but I know some other city councils in Colorado have worked on that in the last few years. Implement one for trustees, city councilors, so maybe something we want to agendize over the summer or have a work session conversation about in the future. Okay, yeah. Hopefully about the last. Or, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Andrew?
I, pardon me for being a little late on Brian, your proposal to do the uh work sessions, sorry, I was looking through, it's like, I don't see the difference, and. Missed it, I think it's a good idea. Do you still think you'll have the um, the monthly department reports in that we can at least read to keep up the speed on? Because that'd be kind of nice.
Yeah, some of them, I'll kind of throw it out there as a not necessarily mandatory. Treasure report's gonna have to be included monthly, kind of similarly to clerk's report, just include them in the consent agenda. And then kind of leave it open.
Yeah, just it's nice to kind of see what, sorry, Sean, I'll point out, but you know, the monthly reports with like our unaccounted for water and that type of thing, I mean, it's kind of nice to see those. If those, you know, and then if Sean comes and he's got a couple of months worth of reports to, that could get kind of long, so. And the same with the police department, it's kind of nice to see what they're.
Yep.
What, we rarely have questions, but it's just nice to read through. Anyway, just to request that. Something like that in there. That's all.
Okay, Gina, we got a few things, um, I know Sue's not here anymore, but I did want to find out. Um, what's happening with the Pearl? That was one thing that she had asked at one of the work sessions or trustee staff interactions. I missed the last meeting, but I didn't see it in the news, but, you know, we don't flesh out all that, was there any update on? Um, I guess it'd be historic preservation, because they said they were gonna work with the owners of the Pearl to see about. You know, uh, what the, what is it going to cost? Uh, obviously, we made this a historic building. And kind of all the new business that people are talking about, wanting to see more and more of. I think that was part of that, I was hoping that would open back up, so I kind of want to know versus gone, that was part of the deal a little bit here, what they were gonna. Be moving forward, so.
Did y'all find out anything new?
Well, there's no, nothing, nothing new related to like opening again grants that we've heard of, but I do know that they're working on a. Plaque ceremony.
Yeah.
Um, it'll be May, maybe the eighteenth or fifteenth or some along the way. Um, I think it's the fifteenth of May, but they don't know the time. We do have a meeting next week, so I can ask about that a little bit more.
Yeah, just find out.
Yeah, but we haven't heard anything on it.
Okay, I remember them saying that, you know, with that designation that we'll help them get grant funding to find out how much it would cost to. You know, uh, restructure the building and bring it back to life, and so I just, I don't want that to fall through the cracks. Um, so anyhow, so it's one thing, um, and also. I brought up the, this is a little while ago now, just, uh, and I just keep it top of mind, I know we have a lot of things on our work session plate now in different ways, but. Um, when we can get back into the conversation about augmentations or conversations, just, uh, I know, I'm not trying to force that or anything, but. I know we'll have more coming at us, and I just kind of want to have a better idea. Either deal with it or or we don't deal with it, but just a better plan versus we haven't talked about it yet, so just. Put that in the world of the list.
In me, Public Works and Planning, we met and went through kind of a basic structure and um there are a few points to adjust. And the plan is then to go for the Water Advisory Board, um, we couldn't do it on April seventeenth. Um, at their last meeting, but hopefully the next one, Sean and I have to talk about that, but. We want to, we we have been working on that, but we need a little tighten up on the numbers a little bit more.
Okay.
But we we can bring it forward, uh, kind of in process as well.
That's fine, I just, like I said, it's just the things, and like if I bring them up, I know, like, it will just stay, stay.
Yeah, thank you.
Upper list of, I know there's a lot of things, so, um, naturally, um, since we've uh just in here, I. Was reading one of the emails from Congresswoman Peterson today, and it's just about grant funding. Um, and I don't know, I don't know enough about it, but I know there are some opportunities, at least I was more drawn to the water section and. The Bureau Re- Reclamation with the Water Smart Grants and then the Department of Natural Resources. The water, uh, the Colorado Water Plan Grants, and I don't know if any, like, says local governments, I don't know if there's something there, but it's just like, hey. I know we have a lot going on, I don't know if any of that would apply, but just stood out in my mind, and it's like, oh, and you're here, so I'm like, I don't know, maybe if there's anything. Could add to that, but, um, but just floating it out there, I don't know if that applies or not, but if it does, it could be helpful, because we have some big bills for. From Sean, so.
The short thing I can add is that if you do apply for a federal grant or for a state grant which has federal backing. Please let us know and we may be able to support your grant with this form of a letter of support. I mean, of course, we're talking about the Congress.
Here, anyhow, I I saw that and I just wanted to bring that up, um, and I guess. I guess I'll just stop there, I have lots of thoughts and it's the time I get to share them, so.
I don't have anything specific, I just want to welcome, welcome the incumbents back and welcome the new trustees. All have a good board. Devin, Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, we're your pro tem elect, I don't know. Uh, yeah, I had a few little things, uh, yeah, I wanted to welcome Mika and Maggie and uh. Feel free to reach out to me if you want to get a cup of coffee. Or beer, if I can, but. Um, or just uh meet and talk, I'd be happy to, uh. Get to know you more, um, if you have the time, and also along with that, uh. The intergovernmental meeting, if you're able to make it, next Tuesday is a great thing, uh. Just to get to know other leaders in the valley, you know, and other towns and see what everyone's doing. Um. I also wanted to say I'm in the orchestra and it's this weekend, so. If you're not doing, we need to get talking with the Buñi Buena because that is at the same time. It's at three P M on Su- Sunday at the Clearview Church, but if you are. Buñi Buena-ing, you can go on Saturday to the steam plant if you want, at seven o'clock, so. If anyone's interested, uh, it's an awesome group.
I've been to several of them and they're really good concerts.
Yeah, I hope this one's really good, too. And, uh, other.
Like I say, we wrap up at three, Devin, so we'll send everybody to your concert afterwards.
They'll be super sweaty and packed. And another random thing I I thought of, uh, that I noticed the other night is the.
And another random thing I, I thought of that I noticed the other night is the prototype street light. Over here. What happened with that? Is it just there? Are we gonna?
Should have been replaced.
Well, I thought we were gonna do it for all the lights. Are they all like that now?
They've all been replaced with the LED.
Because they seem a little different than that one.
Yeah, that one, they didn't, I don't think Song Gray was able to replicate that one that we were looking at. Yeah. So we ended up picking. Two, two rolls ago. They ended up being able to stock and pay for the ones that ended up going. Places what we were initially looking at.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I was curious about that specific one, because I noticed it was different.
Yeah, yes, on Cedar Street.
But, cool.
I am super excited to be here. And I do have one very random question. Who is in charge of cleaning up the bottom of Cottonwood Creek? Like down by Town Lake right now when it's super duper low? Who, whose jurisdiction is that town? Is that, is, is that, I was just, I walk there, you know, I, how close I live, I walk there. And it stays really clean almost all of the time. And then we see it right now where, of course, it's low water. So I was just curious who was in charge of that. I was gonna say, no one, I'm, I'll be here on Sunday. And I know last year, the group, they did McPhelony last year. And so we got to do everything else in town, which was awesome, so.
Yeah, are you talking about Town Lake? The debris in Town Lake? Yeah, the different groups, well, yeah, well, or other works.
Just curious, it, it always looks nice, so. I was just very curious and it always popped up and I thought, what a town that's, but that's it. I'm just excited to be here.
I'd like to welcome Mike and Maggie. I'm glad Andrew and Devin came back. Definitely will miss Sue and Peter. But I think we'll have a good team. I had a. I was thinking, which could be dangerous, but whether we approve topside or. We don't, we still will kind of need that steel drive. It would be nice to have that steel drive intersection and. Because that area is just gonna get busy here most year and it is a traffic issue. And I was thinking, it's probably been six to maybe eight months ago. The Thomas Salida asked the county for a million dollars and they got it. I'm not saying we should ask the county for a million dollars, but I'm thinking it wouldn't hurt to ask them. For money to try and get money to help pay for steel drive when that comes through. Because it will benefit the county as well as us. And maybe they gave away all they could give away, but it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Especially with their safety center over there.
Yeah. But something to think about.
Intersection is technically in the county, so I think it all fits.
We'll take three seventeen if they make that. Joel, or Cindy, do you have more? Great to have you. I don't know why you're, you have your own private row back there.
That's so I can stand up and the camera don't see me stand up, because I can almost sit still for so long without. Being comfortable, so I lean against there and nobody knows that I'm wandering.
Can wander around together on and off, getting close to not being able to sit for this long either.
Speaking of topside, right now we're talking about. Setting up like one-on-one, well, or two-on-one with individual trustees, just to kind of. Some legislative matters that we can, you know, it's not within quasi judicial rules. It'd be nice if you all are amenable to us reaching out and, and trying to set up just to. Kind of see what you think individually, be. Cool, you all okay with that? Thank you.
My compliment, haircut too.
Yes.
Here, I'm here, sorry. I don't have anything, so. Thanks for the reappointment. No, you know, I, I feel like I haven't had a lot to say these last few meetings, so I guess it's the calm before the storm.
We'll make up for it.
Okay, well, thanks. Shane, you have anything?
Uh, just one thing I missed in my report was, I forgot to mention, we actually will only have one rodeo this year. The other rodeo, who, the new rodeo pulled their application, so. Normal operation.
Yeah, just one thing, we submitted a, a grant, a congressional direct spending grant to both Senators Hick and Looper and Bennett. For Cool Island. And a big shout out to Sue. She was really instrumental in getting this going for us and helping us guide us through. She's been awesome on the Air Advisory Board and she will be greatly missed. Wish her all the best in her new adventures. And again, the cover letter, great, thank you very much, Mayor and Brian. And we had a number of community people sign that letter, so.
Yeah, that's good.
I, I think it went, it's as good as polished as it's gonna get, so we'll see how much traction it gets.
That's good. You know, and Sue said that she'd like to, she'd like to still stay involved. On, you know, however she can.
Oh, she's always welcome.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move your chair.
Okay, we got. Meeting, oh, on favor. Anyone opposed?